Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you for coming out. It's not so cold. We had a first meeting at the Hen Hood Library, and it was really cold, and somehow the weather was gotten better. It seemed like it was 46 in my car, is that right?
Wow.
It went from 22 to 46 in a couple of hours?
It went.
Right. It was it went. You're absolutely right. So it's nice to be here. And Colin Smith, who's in the back row, Colin, you want to just say, raise your hand, hello. Peekskill Councilman is here for a little bit. And I just want to introduce Maddie Joel, who works in my office, and Andrew Liebert, who works in my office. Their district office is in Austin, Peachtree Street in Austin downtown. And my district goes from Austin, Portland, Peekskill, up into Button County, Phillips Town, which is Garrison, Cold Spring, and off into Kent. So it's a lot of... I get to go on the roads a lot. Unfortunately, there are a lot of potholes on the road. In my last newsletter, I told you where to call in potholes, and I'm driving along on Route 9A the other night to get down to White Plains, and I just really, you know, at night, and it was raining, you can't even see them.
Yeah.
And I just, you know, it's like, oh, am I going to have a flat tire, which I think a lot of people have. So do call in, because I think it's important for them to get out as quickly as possible. It's really difficult, though, with our weather patterns. You know, when we have something, you know, one day it's 60, which is, I guess, a couple of days ago?
Yes.
And then it, you know, goes down to 10 at night. The roads just can't, they can't manage it, you know? And I drive up on the Teconic, and every week, they are putting pothole, I mean, slow down, and, you know, pothole filling, and that kind of thing. So anyway, our session has started. I'm Sandy Galiff, New York City Assemblywoman, and our session starts at the beginning of June, it's beginning of January, and goes to the end of June. We usually spend a lot of time, at this time of year, working on the budget, the state budget, which is about $175 billion. So it's a very large budget. And we also have a big state. And so we're working on the parameters of that to try to get it done by April 1st. One of the issues, we're sitting in a library, and I want to thank the library for letting us come. You know, I really, I used to be library chair in the Assembly. I actually sat on the library floor. I love libraries. I think they are the, they are our community center at this point, with so much activity going on. They've changed the way they do business, which is wonderful. I always pick up my books on tape as I drive up back and forth to Albany. It really gives me something to do, besides watching the road. But I can always turn them off, so that's the best thing. And, but the library aid in the state budget has been cut $10 million for operational, $20 million for capital, and we have to go back. I mean, that's one thing we really, really want to restore. It's very important to us. The other issue, and I was thinking about, you know, some of the Peekskill issues, of course, is the education aid. And actually, Colin was on the school board before, so you were always kind of like advocating and lobbying us to get more foundation aid, pretty much, for our schools here. And we are trying to work on that desperately. A couple of my districts, Peekskill and Austin are the two that I would say have a greater enrollment of students. And students that have more special needs or higher needs than some of the other school districts. So we are trying very hard to get more foundation aid, which is, came from a lawsuit in New York City, Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit, where New York City said, we are not getting our fair share of aid in the state budget. And so when Governor Spitzer was governor, we put together this plan of foundation aid to try to push more aid to those municipalities. And the difficulty is that Governor Cuomo doesn't commit himself to foundation aid, because this wasn't his plan. So it's a little harder for us to lobby, but we keep doing that. And we've had better success two years ago than we had last year. And I don't know what's going to happen this year, because we've just learned that we have, you know, we're looking at $175 billion budget, but over $2 billion is, has been lost by state income tax that was coming in both in December and January. And we think that's the result of the SALT, the federal government's new tax plan, that if you have property taxes, your average property tax, you can only deduct $10,000. And if you recall where we live, it's a little bit more problematic in New York State, particularly Westchester, Rockland, Putnam, Nassau, Suffolk. It's a real problem for us.
Sandy, what's happening in the new budget with the funding for Planned Parenthood? Are they taking it away?
Oh, the Planned Parenthood, well, let's get through, I don't know what's going to be in the budget for Planned Parenthood at this point, because the budget hasn't been done. But I'm sure that there will be money for Planned Parenthood, so that people have a place to go to get services. Planned Parenthood provides a lot of different services for individuals, and there are many people that use it as a general practice office, which is important. So, you know, some people feel it's not needed, and some people feel it's very much needed. So, you know, we, I have to tell you, in all the pieces of legislation that we have, there's a pro and a con to everything. And everybody has different views. And there's not one thing, I always thought there might be something that would come before us that was motherhood and apple pie, and everybody would dug for it, but it does not happen. It just doesn't happen. I mean, you can think, you know, other than some of our resolutions, and I actually got criticized in the Gazette recently for voting on a resolution with a license plate or something. You know, it's like, you know, it doesn't matter what it is. There are people with different opinions on it. So, anyway, but we're going, you know, we're going through that. We've had, so we're going to go through the budget, and we're getting a lot of input. We had a hearing, the Assembly had a hearing about a week ago, five-hour hearing with people indicating, you know, what their concerns were. And in Westchester County, a lot of concerns about roads and transportation, a lot about childcare, providing places for people to take their children when they go to work. Also, there were a lot of interest, it was interesting, on the disposable bags, single, the plastic bag issue. A lot of people, I mean, it seemed like a lot of communities are kind of dealing with that issue. In the budget, the governor has proposed that we ban single-use plastic bags. Other than, there are some exceptions. If you buy your meat, you can put it in a plastic bag. If you buy your pears, you can put them in a plastic bag. If you get newspapers delivered to your house, they can be in plastic bags. Otherwise, they'd be wet, and you could read them anyway. And, but he also put in there with the paper bags, that would be up to every community to decide what they wanted to do about paper bags in their community. So if we were to ban, and we can have a discussion about that, if we were to ban the plastic bags, would the community put like a 25 cent charge on paper bags? But, you know, if we ban it on a statewide level, it will be banned. I know Croton in my district has done a lot of work on this issue. I don't think they've taken a position yet. Do you think, I don't think they have.
No.
But like Newcastle has. Newcastle's banned plastic bags. I think over Mamaronek and that area, they have done that. So that's one of the issues that is in the budget. We also have recreational marijuana in the budget. There's no money coming from it in the budget yet, but it is in the budget, whether we should decide to allow recreational marijuana.
Sales, recreation marijuana sales?
Yes, yeah, sales. We have, we have medical marijuana now, which we have, by law, we have voted for. And we've included the use of medical marijuana for certain kinds of illnesses. And we've added to it over time, as we learn something about, like with veterans, post-traumatic syndrome. We didn't have that included in the beginning. We have now put it into the, into the issue of medical marijuana. We also had, I remember seeing a show on television about the athletes and getting addicted to opioids. And they said, you know what, if we could use marijuana instead, maybe, you know, we can get off of those. So we actually, last year, did that in our, in our budget. So...
Will that bring a lot of revenue, like in taxes? How's that going to be taxed, those places that sell?
Well, the problem with marijuana is, everybody has to pay for it, because insurance companies don't pay for it. So you, the issue is, I guess we're getting, are we getting money from that? I mean, it's illegal. I don't think we can tax any, I have to ask the question. Do we tax illegal?
No.
I don't think we do. I don't think we can.
So it's all profit for them selling it?
Whoever is selling it would be the profit. But at the other end, people, and you have to have a prescription for it, and you have to go certain places to get it. There are going to be some where they will deliver to you. I actually went up to a marijuana center, you know, the old Kodak company where we used to take pictures of people?
Yes.
With a roll. Some people won't, the young people in the back won't remember that. But we used to have a roll. And Kodak did really well. So I remember the whole huge Kodak factory up in Rochester. And now, part of it is turned into producing marijuana. But you walk in there, it's like a big room, it's like a doctor's office, spotless. Well, they knew we were coming, but with spotless. And it probably always is. And, and you go in, and you meet with the doctor, you get the prescription, and then you sit there and wait, and then they come out with the medical marijuana for you. But then, I went back into the areas where they're growing all of this. And as we went through, and it's becoming so popular, that they were doing a lot by hand, and now they're trying to invent machines that will, you know, put it in a capsule, or do whatever it is, because we don't allow smoking marijuana. So they have to put it into some kind of a container, and they, they're going to automate that, I think, in the future. But I remember the company said, we can't wait for recreational marijuana, because we have all this space, and, you know, they can see the dollars. Andre Rainey, our mayor of Peekskill, is here.
Sandy, one question.
Wait, wait a second. So, anyway, so we, I don't know what we're going to do with the recreational marijuana, and I'd like to hear from you on that issue, you know, how you feel about it. But again, we have, medical marijuana, we have approved. There is an issue of reforming our marijuana laws. So if somebody pulls out, I have a Kleenex, but if somebody pulls out their marijuana, instead of going through the criminal justice process, that, you know, we have, we have different laws on the books. So we can do that separately. And then the issue is recreational marijuana. Now, I did put in my newsletter, which we have some up here. I asked a question, how you felt about that, subdividing it or whatever. I did have a panel discussion in Croton on the issue a number of months ago, to see how people were feeling about it. But it may be in the budget, it may not be in the budget. I don't know how fast we're going to go. Looking at the mayor, I know he probably is mad, because the governor took out money for the roads, the AIM. Did you, I think he lost money on AIM. It was, it's Aid to Locality Municipalities AIM. And the governor said, if you didn't get a lot of money from the state, that he was just going to take it out. So most of my towns and villages, and I assume the city, I don't have my list here, will lose some. We're going to try to put that back in the budget. It's probably worth about $64 million, I think. So we hope to be able to do that. I'm just trying to think about other municipal aid that is problematic. Have you heard anything at all?
Well, that was amazing. But I also wanted just to, you know, continue to actually, continue to fight for the funding for education and youth program, after school programs. That's been a primary focus that I ran in council from the very beginning. I know there's a lot of financial challenges, but that is one that I want you to, you know, keep on your radar as a priority. And, you know, of course, from my position, and as a person from the community, I'll do everything I can to support, lobby for it, and of course, take the trip back and forth to Albany if I have to. But I want to say, just continue to fight for that cause. In the meantime, as you try to find other ways to get funding for everything else.
Right. Well, it's all about our youth, and making sure that we give them all of the opportunities at a very young age, so that when they get older, they can be the best and brightest, and have a wonderful future. And it all starts at a very young age. So we will be looking at that. That's why childcare came into, to the position. I mean, you know, people are working, and they need a place, a good place for their children. And their children can keep learning at our daycare centers. And then we have pre-kindergarten programs, where we've really tried to put more and more money into it, but there's just never enough that we do. And believe it or not, we have a bill to make kindergarten, full-day kindergarten a requirement in our state. But not all, I mean, we're pretty good here, but there are places where there's not full-day kindergarten. And, you know, kindergarten students are different than when I was a kindergarten student. As a matter of fact, my kindergarten best friend, Rocky, I just got a text that she had a birthday two days ago. I have no idea how it ever got on my, my text. I don't know, but it did. And so now I have to call her in St. Louis. But, but, you know, we didn't do all that much in kindergarten. It was kind of like a socialization. Now we socialize kids early on, and we start to really teach them phonics and everything else, you know, as they go forward. So, yes.
Sandy, a question.
I think I had my hand up first.
Well, you actually had a question already. So let's go to other people.
You could only ask one question at this time?
No, but we let everybody have a chance.
Well, I appreciate if you call me, whatever.
My question is, I was at the Greenberg Library yesterday, listening to the questions and answers, going back and forth. And a number of different social groups asked for an increase in budgets, all for very good reasons. So my, my question to you, and I really don't know, is are we talking about a finite pie, where everybody jockeys for a larger share of that? Or is it expandable? Does it ever expand? When you go back, and all of the legislators weigh in, is Cuomo and the administration open for a greater pie in total? Or are we only talking about each of these competing social groups trying to get a larger share, because they all make a very good case?
Right. There are a lot of wonderful programs. The problem is, usually every year, other than when we're really in a, in a terrible situation like 20, 2008, where we really just, everything got ratcheted down. And anytime, you know, September 11th was a problem.
Emergency.
You know, there've been emergency problems. You know, we usually have more income coming in between when the governor presents the budget in January, and when we adopt it at the end of March, usually more money has come in. But what I said before, because of SALT now, and people either leaving the state, or going to live in another state for a half a year plus a day, we are losing income.
Revenue.
So if we've lost, now in the first two months, we've lost, we've lost 2 billion, 2 billion plus. So we're going to have to take that out of something. And, you know, whether, the two big areas that we have in our budget are education and healthcare. He had actually increased money for healthcare, and most of that is Medicaid. And I have to tell you, most of Medicaid is about older people living in nursing homes, and having elderly care. So, so we may retrench a little bit on that. We want to be sure that we increase education aid. I think the aid to Peekskill School is about a million more in foundation aid. But that's the only district in my area that got such a big increase. And we want to see more of that. So, and then you have to remember, we have New York City legislators who deal with things differently. You know, they don't, you know, we'll talk about the property tax cap and stuff there, but they, they deal with different issues than we do. And then upstate is different also. So, you know, it may be that I want something, but there is a huge amount of compromise. Huge, 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 huge.
Thank you.
So, so I can't tell you that. In other years, I would have told you, we would have been able to increase, you know, maybe, maybe a billion dollars extra, because it would have come in. But this year, I don't think I can say that.
Because it diminished income.
Yeah. And if it keeps diminishing, then we have more of a problem. So, and they're all good services.
It's good to know that compromise still exists.
We do compromise. You realize that we do do this.
No, I mean that sincerely.
Yes. We have to have a budget done on April, well, you know, if we didn't, the world wouldn't come to an end. But we've done it. And we, we used to have late budgets. Remember, we used to have late budgets. There were times when we had budgets in August. I remember missing vacations with families and stuff, and being up in the holiday, I know, Howard Johnson's at that point, that was falling apart, in the middle of the summer. But we had late budgets. But more recently, we've had on-time budgets. Under the governor, Governor Cuomo, we've had, what have we had? Eight, eight, eight years of, of on-time budgets, basically. It was one year we were a day late or something. But we've really been on time. We do compromise, because we just, now, now we're in the phase, we want to get it done. We never, we've never held back on state workers. Never. I mean, we've never done that. So even when we didn't have a budget. But it did put a lot, when we didn't, when we had late budgets, it put a lot of people in jeopardy, like the not-for-profits and so on. It's not like they had a huge surplus sitting there, that they could pay individuals. And some people, even our school districts, they were out on a limb. They didn't know what their budget would be for the next year, because we didn't have a budget on time. They had to send out bills. What would their bills look like, even if they got more state aid? So I don't know. All those things were not good. So we have, we have done it, you know, and, and we just, we just have to compromise. Everybody gets a little bit of something. I mean, the governor would like to get it all, but he's not going to get it all. And there's a little bit of a battle going on about Amazon in New York City. Yeah, that's an interesting battle. Yeah, that's an interesting thing, because, you know, he was promoting it as many, many jobs, which I think sounds great. We don't live there. So I don't, you know, when you live in a community, you have a feeling about how much, how many more people you want to have in your community, and working, and that kind of thing. But there is the issue of how much do we have to pay Amazon? You know, what's our contribution to them to have them come here? Is this too much? What was it, 3, 3 billion?
3 billion.
Yeah. So the question is, and, and it was also just done, you know, the, I'm not totally into this issue yet, but I heard Andre Stewart-Cousins, who's the head of the Senate, talk yesterday, and she said that, you know, they were never, nobody, the legislators weren't involved in this deal. So the governor just comes in and says, sign off on it. So, you know, that's, that's really hard, because you, you know, we do have governments that are not about kings, dictators, whatever. We, we have democracies, and they're a mess. And they're hard. Yes, we have democracies. We want democracies. And so, you know, so it is hard. It's so much harder, the more people you have to involve in decision-making, the harder it becomes to come to a conclusion. But, so we've been able to do that. So I don't know what's going to happen. Yes?
I'd like your opinion or your thoughts on the New York Health Act, single payer, Medicare for All, whatever you want to call it, your support of it, what's going on in the House? I know that a lot of people are for it, but where do you stand in whatever our chances? I know the governor is entrenching, and how can we, like, pick him out of the trench and get him on board?
He hasn't been on board with that, but he wasn't on board with, like, medical marijuana when we did it. He was not, had to be dragged into that. Now he's really for recreational. I don't know what happened there. There might have been an election. I don't know. So I think the Assembly will probably vote on it. I don't know that the bill is the right bill. And I've always said that. I'm on the bill. But I, you know, I think it really has to be vetted, where the money's coming from. And this may not be the period of time where we, we push a whole bunch of new spending on the state. You will save money, because you wouldn't have to do insurance, right? Everybody would, would save money that way. But we're going to have to put a huge influx of money into the state, and the state, you know, come back and pay for it. So, so I think the numbers really have to be vetted. I mean, you have to be really serious about it. In the past, the Assembly always knew that the Senate would not vote for it. So because of that, I don't think we really worked it up well enough. Now, Dick Godfrey, who's the sponsor of it, says it's perfect. So, and I did, did have a meeting on it with the pros and cons a little while ago. And it was interesting, you know, with the people with the pros and cons.
So digging back on that, the governor wants to have another one of his commissions, which in my opinion, is a ridiculous way to go ahead, because he's going to appoint those people on the commission. And so what I've seen in the past is, those people will support his position. So can the Assembly say, okay, if we need to do this, let's go out for public hearings, let's go out and have a bunch of experts that are going to do it and not have...
They've had, they've had some hearings. But I, I think if they had a, you need, if we had a bill that was passed by the Assembly and Senate, remember, the governor has to sign it. So the governor has to be a part of this process. So if you had a task force that had people that are appointed by the Assembly, and the Senate, and the governor, that is more understandable. We don't know what the result will be, and whether, you know, he will insert his positions on it or not. But he may come back and say, you know, look, right now, we can't afford to do this at this moment. I would love for this issue to be a federal issue, and that we dealt with it on a federal level, like other countries, Italy, and Canada, and all those other places. But, you know, we haven't. So, you know, that may be the first step, anyway, because I don't, I don't think we're going to have it in place this year. So that's just my feeling at the moment. And my feeling at the moment can change at any moment in Albany, because you think something's not going to happen, and then all of a sudden, it does. Yes. And all of a sudden, you've got a, you know, you've got a couple of days to think about something and whatever. So you have to hope that you've thought about it before, because it can come up. We've got congestion pricing, that will be one of those hurried. Now we're getting the governor saying, well, if you don't do congestion pricing in New York City, below 60th Street, you know, we're going to raise the subways, you know, up to, what, $6 or something like that?
Yeah, it was a big one.
Yeah, a big, big increase. So, so I, you know, that's more the pressure at the moment, because single payer is not in the budget. So we don't have that. And I think we have to think it through. I think we have to think through recreational marijuana. I think we have to think through things before we just rush into something. And let's see where we go from there. Yes. Medicare for All.
Yes, Medicare for All. So I do support it being on a federal level. And that would be awesome. So I'm with you on that.
Right.
The camera on the subway, is that going to...
Yeah. But can I speak? Thank you. So I think that's awesome. I know that you can really influence how the White House works at this current time. But yes.
I can.
Yeah. But with the New York Health Act, because you are talking about it in a budgeting standpoint, not so much in a conceptual standpoint.
No, conceptually, I'm totally there, conceptually.
So even if the money was there, yeah, so... Yeah, if the money was there, you'd be for it.
Yes.
So that's awesome. So now, Jeff Bezos is the wealthiest man on the planet, and maybe even in history. Yet we have $3 billion to hand the wealthiest man on the face of the earth. But we don't have any money at all for the New York Health Act. Or you have concerns? I mean, it seems kind of ridicu, because the New York Health Act is going to cost way less than $3 billion. Not only, but Jeff Bezos wouldn't notice that if you took it out of his pocket. You wouldn't even know you were there. So...
Right. But aren't, aren't we basically, we give him $3 billion, but he's going to give us $30 billion back in tax revenues with the new jobs, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah. Jeff Bezos is going to pay taxes to New York State. He's not going to have armed warriors to find him.
No, 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 no. We're not going to get his taxes.
But he ever hear his taxes.
That's not going to happen.
Right. But that's a way to look at it. That's a way to look at it.
Don't you think it's being kind of cheap, in that sense, if you're concerned about money, when it comes to people's lives? I see lots of signs about killing people. People care about lives. I don't agree with the signs, but there's a lot of support for people living and people's health. So, and you seem to support Planned Parenthood, you seem to support healthcare. So why are you so concerned about being so cheap today?
Well, because, no, because I think every bill that we pass, we have to look at the financial impact of every bill that we pass.
Maybe we can not give Jeff Bezos $3 billion, and you can push for that?
Well, that's, that's the other side of it. And it may, you know, come down to that. I don't know whether we're going to have a vote. I don't know what, I don't know what our vote is at the present time, what we have to do. I think it's going to be more through public authorities, perhaps, voting. I don't know the whole, this, this just came up this week, like, we got a problem. So I hadn't thought that they had a problem. I thought it was kind of a dumb bill.
But you could push to have a vote, or you could push to have the support of the New York Health Act, and not just be so concerned about money.
Right. No, I, I'm sure that it's Dick Godfrey's bill. I'm sure we're going to vote on it this year, in the Assembly, as we have several years. All I'm saying is that I think, to be able to go, to get it done, you have to really know where the money's coming from and everything. You know, I have a bill, you know, Indian Point is closing, if you didn't know. And there is a request for us to have a commission established, a task force commission established to do oversight, a citizens' commission to do oversight of Indian Point, beyond other things, because the NRC is oversight, Public Service Commission is oversight to some extent. But it would be, you know, a commission. And actually, Nancy Van is very much involved in that from Peekskill. So I looked at the potential So I looked at the potential bill and it had in it that we were gonna have this task, task force, but people were gonna be paid to go to meetings, travel expenses and whatever. And I'm thinking, so where are we getting the money for, for this task force? I can't put a bill in that I don't know where money is coming from because, you know, it just, you know, I, I believe that you've gotta know the whole picture. And maybe it's just a little bit of money. Maybe it's twenty thousand dollars and maybe we can get it out of, out of the Public Service Commission. Maybe we can get it from one of the deals that was made with the governor and Riverkeeper. Maybe we can get that amount of money out. Yeah, we have some other advocates here on this. But, but, you know, I want to know where it's coming from. So, so that's usually the way I operate. Sometimes I'm frivolous and I, you know, for some reason, but I usually am not.
So good.
Self frivolous. But, you know, I like, I like to know the whole picture. And I think about, I mean, I'm, I'm real property tax chair, so I, I'm always thinking about every bill that we do, when we give a tax exemption, who's gonna pay for it?
We're number one.
And which?
We're number one, Westchester, number one in taxes.
Taxes. Yeah, yeah.
And you're the chair.
Right. Well, I don't set the taxes locally, et cetera, et cetera.
What do you do?
But, no, I don't.
I hope you're looking for ways to cut that.
Right. You know what ways I'd love to cut taxes? Is there anybody here from Cortland?
Yes.
Okay. I'd love in Cortland for Buchanan, Croton, to be part of the Cortland justice, justice system. Have one courthouse in Cortland instead of three. I would like, anybody here from Cold Spring? There are three. There's Nelsonville Court, there's Phillips Town Court, and there's Cold Spring Court, all on 301 within each other. Now, why aren't they combined? So where's the public saying, I want to combine this? You know, Buchanan's gonna have a problem because they're gonna lose forty-six percent of their revenue because of Indian Point. Now, there's gotta be some changes. And I don't know whether they want to have, we have a police officer here, but you're from Piscopo, right? But, you know, there's a Buchanan police force. So do they want to continue with the Buchanan, you know, Buchanan police force, or do they want to combine, like Cortland has, with the county and the state? So, but I can't, I can't do that. I would love to be able to do that. I, I worked hard to get the Village and Austin Town Courts combined. We did. I actually had to do a bill. But the communities wanted to do it and I wanted them to do it too. But I had to put a bill in because they were such an old community, they had something on the books that said they couldn't do it. So we had to pass legislation to enable them to, to put together the, the two courts. And now it's one.
Do you think Linda Pagliisi would be supportive of that?
Linda Pagliisi has been absolutely terrific on combining stuff. She was like the early combiner. She, she got rid of the elected highway superintendent in Cortland and put it into a whole public works, whatever it's called. She's got a whole, you know, she, so, so she really did combine it. Now, I want to say in Piscopo, you combine the fire departments, right? I, I don't know whether, I mean, to do that, because you had to deal with new equipment that's bigger than the old equipment, you, you build something new. And I don't know whether you realize the savings, you know, if you will or you won't over a period of time.
Over a period of time, we should.
Yeah, you should. Yes. And then, and then when you're combining services, that's, that's really good. But everybody, you know, the answer is everybody wants their own. How many school districts do we need?
That's the one.
I taught in a countywide school district in Virginia. It was not a problem. I was hired countywide. I taught in a school. We had a principal in a school. I was paid by the county. It didn't really matter, you know? And, but we will not give up anything. I think, I think Austin and Tarrytown are a good combination. I think Croton and Barcliff could be a good combination.
For one district.
Ah, for one district. I don't know about Piscopo because you're a city. Cities are a little bit more difficult, I think, than the towns. But, I mean, could Hen Hood and Croton combine? You know, they're on the town outside.
I have a question.
But nobody seems to want to do that. So, you know what? I didn't call, I didn't call on you. You've been at every one of my meetings and you're gonna talk about the same thing.
The subject, you know, people being, speak up. I know, I know how these things happen. You have, and follow up the question on Planned Parenthood. If you'll notice that on, on December 20th, the New York Times has an article on how Planned Parenthood mistreats their employees, especially all their employees in general, and this includes Hudson-Beconic, which is in charge of Westchester and Piscopo, but especially their pregnant employees. Meanwhile, they pay their executives enormous amounts of money.
Question or a speech?
And of course, no, and of course, this is a common question. And of course, of course, Planned Parenthood kills more human beings than any other organization. Why? Why? How old are they?
I just, I just have to tell you, Ed must love me because...
Don't count on it, baby.
All right. Well, I think you do. Because you come to every, wait a minute. You come to every one of my meetings, whether it's on, whatever it's on. If it's on election law, Ed is in the front seat. Whether it's on recreational, I think you didn't go to recreational.
Thirty-seven years in office, the perfect example for term limits. Thirty-seven years in office.
Anybody?
Thirty-seven great years.
Okay.
By election, by election, my friend. By election, not by appointment.
Because we know that.
Okay. All right.
See, I don't come to everyone in meetings.
No, I know, but you've already spoken.
But my question to you is...
No, wait a minute. You've spoken.
Explain to me why.
Yes, back here.
I've been raising my hand for ten minutes.
No, but you already had a question.
I have a question to ask.
If you will, later. Okay.
You add hearings once in a while.
On the issue of driver's licenses for undocumented immigrants, which they were allowed to have before nine eleven.
Right.
I, what is your position? What have we gained over these years not allowing them to have driver's licenses? Because there are certain things we have lost. People are driving without ever taking a driving test and passing it. So I, I'm interested in your thought process.
Right. Well, actually, in my newsletter, that was one of my first questions to ask you, what you all thought about it. Let me tell you kind of where I'm coming from. I, I, I am really concerned about our roads and the way people drive, just generally, all people. I mean, you know, I think we all have to be reminded of the rules of the road, to move over, not use your cell phone, do all these things, you know, how do you merge into traffic? I think we've all forgotten a lot of stuff. But I do believe that people that are here illegally are on our roads. And we're, you know, we could have accidents with somebody. It could be our fault, their fault, I don't, somebody's fault. And maybe they don't know the rules of the road because they came from another country and they had different rules. So I think we need to see if we can get a way for everybody to have a test, a driver's test, just like we did when we were sixteen. And you gotta do a road test and you gotta do a driver's test and your, your license is only good for driving and that's it. It's not for anything else. It's only good for driving, no federal, anything. It's just only good for driving. Would we save, I mean, would we have better drivers on the road? I think if we all took a test again, we would be better drivers on the road. I'm really advocating that every ten years, we do at least a internet test to remind us of the new rules of the road. I think that would be a good thing to do. I don't want to go to DMV. I don't want you to do it in DMV. But if you could do it elsewhere. I also think on our driver's license, we looked at Andrew's picture today. You were sixteen. And he, he doesn't even look the same. And if he wanted to, that's his photo ID. He, that's ridiculous. We should've updated photo ID, just like we do with passports. But our DMV office, they say, we can't do it. I say, but they do it for the passport. You go to CVS, get your little picture, you send it in. I don't know that they prove that, you know, maybe the first time you can't do it, but... So are you willing to go get another photo, Andrew?
No, I'd like to go to the DMV.
Right. So, but I think it would help us with insurance and, and better on the road. But I want to be sure that the bill really, and I, and I've kind of, the bill's been around for a while and I've talked to the sponsors of the bill and they've been different sponsors. I just want to be sure what that bill is gonna say at the end before I say that, you know, I will support it. So, but I, you know, I want it to be specific as to what we want to do, not everything else. So, way in the back? Oh, Kathy Tabit walked in. She's Piscopo Councilwoman.
I hope that you touched on it in the first two minutes that I was not here. But I'm interested in early voting, where we're at in terms of early voting.
Oh, I didn't even get a chance to talk about the voting stuff. We did a whole bunch of things early on with voting. And you, you will notice that there are people running around to find people to run for office. Usually we run around in May to find people to run for office, but now it's January, February. And because we've combined, we're gonna combine the September and June primary together and we're gonna have it only in June so that we hope that more people will run for office, not run for office, but vote. Because when you have to, you know, vote two different times in primaries, plus the, behind the mechanisms behind it, everybody has to go out with petitions, et cetera, et cetera. So we're combining it. So there will be a June primary. People are gonna run around petitions, starting at the end of February and having to turn them in at the beginning of April. And so that will be done. We're not having early voting with the primary, though. We're gonna have early voting next fall. And the reason we're doing that, we're staging it because the Board of Elections, the Board of Elections said we can't, we can't do all these changes all at once. So we're trying to program them out. We're trying to make sure it works this year because next year is a presidential election and you're gonna have many more people out to vote. Well, so this year, we have primary in June, third, third Tuesday, I think it's in June, third or fourth, I can't remember, in June. And then we will have the election in November. And, but it will be, there'll be early days of voting. It will be done like ten days before. It'll include two weekends. And it will be, it has to be structured by our Board of Elections. And I don't know whether there'll be one voting place here in Piscopo, one in Cortland. I don't know, or combined. I, I don't know exactly what they're gonna do, but they have to get a plan together so that you're gonna have to go someplace. It won't be your places you usually go for, you know, to, to vote. But then on Election Day, it will be back to the regular place that you go. And we've also passed the first part of a constitutional amendment to make absentee ballot easier so that you can just get an absentee ballot. You don't have to give a reason. I always get an absentee ballot when I go to Albany because I can't vote in the school elections. So I get an absentee ballot and I have to say who my boss is, you know, how long I'm gonna be there, where am I gonna be, and all that kind of stuff. I do say the boss is my people. It's not the governor. I didn't know who my boss was. It's like, it's my people.
You've had my hand up for ten minutes.
So, yeah, but, but you know what? There are a lot of other people that want to say something and you already have...
You don't take questions from one side of the fence.
Well, I'm not. All right. Ed has been at every one of my meetings talking with me.
These officers have seen it. Had my hand up for ten minutes. Nobody's calling him.
Right. Now, but I'm calling the people that haven't asked a question first. We will get back to you.
Can I have a question? Can I have a question?
Yes. Now, I, did I, did I finish up all this stuff on election law? Not really.